Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us at the September meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of the exits around the room and now join us as we pledge our fealty to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a quick housekeeping note before we begin. There are no public hearings tonight, so there will be no public comment. And I'm happy to tell my colleagues that while Anne-Marie Hampstead has done a stellar job, again stepping in as Acting Planning Board Secretary, it appears that we will have a new secretary as of next Monday night. It will be Cynthia Palestina-Wittman, who was incredibly qualified. We had five individuals who submitted, and I have to say, I could see hiring each and every one of them. But she kind of, she had done a lot of research. She'd already read the secret cookbook and other stuff, so, and is ready to jump on in. So first on the agenda is Mike Sotoxender. The applicants are before us. We're in a public hearing, but not tonight. That's adjourned until the next meeting. And in the interim, we had sent the applicant over to the ZBA because of the scale calculation. It looked as though it was beyond our ability to grant the increase under a special use permit. But then we discovered that there had been some double counting of spaces, specifically the car spaces in the building as well as the car ports. So as it turns out, they don't need a variance, and we're here just to discuss the most recent submission of the plans. And we'll be looking to reopen the public hearing in two weeks and consider closing it and taking action at that time. So let me first start with the, do you want to start, Cyril? Do you want to?
Uh, well.
You like to start, yeah. Perfect.
Neither am I.
Almost there.
Our director is here tonight.
Yes.
Oh, maybe it's fine. I'm not going to say.
And can, but we can share.
Hi.
It's a happy day for.
Testing? Thank you.
About like this is fine.
About like this.
So there were some comments that Liz brought up, basically some housekeeping comments. We showed a line that was encroaching over the north property line, which represented where the previous gravel was. So we pulled that line back. As it turns out, we wouldn't have had gravel that far anyway because we have a five-foot setback, a drainage swale, and a fence that would have prevented the gravel from going that far. So we're not doing that. She also requested that we do a list of drawings, which we've done. On one of the drawings that I submitted for her for review, this floor plan didn't show up. Got that back in the picture. Did some modification on the pole light detail, which were based on her comments. We made those changes. And I've sent the, there was also a comment that the two lights at the front of the property, close to the highway, had to be 12 feet high. And so I sent that back to the lighting consultant. And we're also going to add a single sort of floodlight on the back gable end of the building to illuminate the rear parking lot. So when he redoes his foot candle calculations, that'll show up. And I think I forwarded to you, Michael, my written comments to the lighting consultant. So we should have had that back by the 21st.
I was going to say, just remember that we need to have that in order to close the public hearing because we can't take new information.
Soon as I get it, I'll.
Yeah, I know. And I'd like to get this, I'm sure I know you guys would too. Off the plate.
I think that's it. Nothing else comes to mind. Oh, I did do a, also on part of that lighting plan, I did a clarification of where the, what the symbol is for that, the symbol that the lighting consultant uses to show his luminaire. So that'll be more self-explanatory when you get that.
Thank you. Like I said, the real issue was, it appeared as though a light would be going either in the drainage trail or in a parking lot, or in a parking stall, or I should say, display stall for an auto sale along the northern boundary because it's probably just kind of squished in and there probably is room, but it was difficult to see.
Well, what I did on the detail that you'll see is, I don't have it with me. Basically, we're showing the base for the pole inside the five-foot setback, which is going to make that stall a little bit smaller, and I called it, I labeled it as a compact car. So it's an 18-inch diameter base. They'll just have to put a smaller car in that spot, and it's only one car.
So for the record, I did email Mr. Bowman of Prairie Fire Department, but also to get in something in writing, but also for the record, Mr. Bowman did call me, oh, a month ago, and said they had no issues. A reminder, they did see, not the most recent plan with the small changes, but they saw basically this version, where you had the wider gate, and there's no longer a pinch point there.
Right. And that, the layout hasn't changed based on these last few comments?
Nope, not at all. So I'm just putting in the record that he did make a phone call directly to my cellphone, but I have asked, just for there to be something in the file to say that they reviewed it. There were some other small comments that I think, I know Ms. Axelson already sent over to you.
Mm-hmm.
So let me start over with our consultants. Mr. Sotero, any comments?
Well, I did go over it with Liz today, and I think Cyril covered most of it. She and Cyril have been working fairly, fairly close to try to get this all set so that at the 21st meeting, Planning Board should be in a position to hopefully take action. Cyril, one thing Liz mentioned to me today is, I guess she wanted to discuss monuments and the type.
Oh, right.
Because I guess, I wasn't part of that, but I guess Tad wanted, was it all property corners or just the front property corners?
Well, I, we had that discussion. She wanted all the corners, and I thought we had talked about, and I might be wrong, I thought we had talked about using a steel rebar set flush with the ground and encased or surrounded with concrete so that the, just to allow for plowing, so that the metal top would be able to be detected with a metal detector, and be flush with the ground, encased in concrete, so it wouldn't move. But that's what we had put forth. I don't remember whether she was in agreement with that or not.
If I were you, I would just contact Tad directly, call her.
Okay.
Because this is a.
The marker plate is a cemetery.
A marker plate?
The metal plate is a cemetery.
Yeah, you want to do that?
I think contact.
I'll talk to Tad.
I think that she just wants something that's just going to be.
Tad prefers the little concrete that looks like the top of an obelisk, I know.
Yeah, the usual monuments that are, we see on highway.
She prefers because rebar can get bent.
Well, but if they encase it, if they do encase it, you know, in concrete, in some like fashion, that would probably do it.
Just saying, just clear that with Tad, because this is basically a condition for her to be able to identify where the property boundaries are. That's all.
Yeah. The other thing is, I just, I asked Liz if the Planning Board was okay with the light fixture type, because it's not, you know, like our normal one, but if you're okay with it, that's fine.
What we were proposing was something that was similar to what.
It's a Cobra without having the, it's not a Shepherd's, but it's a Cobra, and I think it's fine.
I mean, I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure you guys.
No, no, no. It's because it's a square box instead of a round, but in this area, we don't really have a lot of.
I agree. No, I agree with that.
Yes. And let's remind, it's for the audience, this is, there will be exterior changes to the building as well as to the site. There'll be cars pulled back behind the fence, so it is going to dress up the site so when you first drive in, it'll look more aesthetically pleasing.
Yep.
Let me start to my left.
Excuse me. I do have one thing. I drove through the neighborhood, and the only other building that has sidewalks is Stewart's, and they were allowed to have their sidewalk end, and then let the people step off the sidewalk and use their pavement to travel to the south end of the site, for example, and pick up the sidewalk again. I drove to what used to be the Hess station. They don't have any sidewalks, and nobody has any sidewalks on the other side of the highway. So my request would be to eliminate the sidewalks, and my follow-up fallback position would be to allow the sidewalk to, instead of running the full length along the highway, curve in to where the pavement is, allow the people to walk down the pavement, then get back on the sidewalk.
Well, your pavement is where cars are stored, so people couldn't walk through it. A would be my response. B, as I mentioned in an email to you, the owners of the site just to the south, the psychiatric center, have indicated they'd like to have some sort of pedestrian connection to this part of town. Three, which is why we required it in the first place, I mean, or asked for it because it is required in the code. Then three, the reason why there's no sidewalk at Hess is because there's no immediate neighborhood around it. In addition, the design speed at that road and the curve, it didn't seem safe to try to get people to walk there anyway. There's only one residence next to it. So what we're looking for basically is because there's a large neighborhood to the east of this site, there's a big condominium complex, I'm forgetting the name of it.
Behind.
The Arbors. And ultimately, when the use to the north of Stewart's comes in, anytime they come in, we will make sure that there's a sidewalk there too, so there'll actually be a way for people from the neighborhood to come down, shop safely there. And then ultimately, when the owners of the Psych Center, if they're, when they're able to get their development going, they're going through, obviously, cleanup right now, they'd be able to then walk all the way down to that center as well. So that's what it's, that's why it's required, but as I asked my colleagues along the way to speak tonight, they can address the issue of the sidewalk. Does that sound fair? You've heard my position on it.
Okay.
Let me start to the left. Ms. Kane, any comments?
My only comment, I guess, is to address the issue of the sidewalks, and that I do support keeping the sidewalks. I understand it's frustrating as a business owner when you're an early adopter, so to speak, you know, that the other sites around you haven't come forward for redevelopment, so they haven't been required to do that, but please be assured that in the future they will be.
Thank you, Tori. Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I have no comment other than the sidewalk, and basically, I agree with Tori. I'm usually pretty sympathetic about that, but now with the development of the neighborhood, you know, just to your side, I think in the long run, it might be also good for you, people, if you're getting foot traffic through there too. Even if it's kids looking at cars, maybe they get their parents to come by them. So, you know, I, I don't.
Good point. You know, I think it's, that's actually a very good point.
One person every six ones walk by there.
Pardon me?
One person every six ones walk by there.
Right, but because there's no sidewalks right now.
I have to weigh in on sidewalks also. We're really trying to be consistent on both nine and 9G.
Right.
You know, and yes, it's unfortunate when you're on one of the leading edge, but ultimately, it will pay off to your benefit, I'm sure.
That corner's a bit dangerous.
I agree.
The mic's gone a few times coming out of there.
I can believe that. I mean, I know there's, the speed limit starts at 40, then it jumps up to 45, and people seem to want to go up to 55 suddenly. Right.
They get running for the hill, you know.
But that's, there's a reason why these sidewalks are set far enough in from the fog line, the white line, that I think it'll be safe because there's some space in between you and the road.
Right.
Ms. Dexter, any comments?
I guess I agree with my colleagues on the sidewalk, because, you know, planning is part, looking into the future and hoping that that site at the Psych Center will be developed, and, you know, you guys will be sitting pretty if, you know, you become part of the whole neighborhood.
Can we work whatever later when they develop? But right now, nobody.
I'm always in favor of taking care of these things at the moment.
Yeah, I understand.
And just getting it done.
But you got a mental curve in here. Nobody goes in that side.
No, I understand.
From Stewart's side, I understand.
You're not the first person to tell us that.
Saying no one's going to cross the guardrail to go down these side rails. No one.
No guardrail down the whole road.
I'm not sure where, when I, the owners of the Psych Center actually have a development here in Hyde Park. It's called River Ridge.
Yeah.
And so I see them periodically. At any rate, when I talk to them, they were actually thinking of maybe trying even to do steps down. They have sort of elaborate plans. This is for their residential.
They're going to state the gravel's.
It's so, it's, I'm not sure how it's going to connect, but they were encouraging us to keep the sidewalk there so it could connect. And a good example, by the way, is Quality Inn didn't want to put a sidewalk in, and as soon as they did.
The Parks Department.
The Parks Department put a sidewalk in or a pathway, a gravel pathway, and through the drive-in, and now that's utilized all the time by both residents and people who stay at Quality Inn because they can now walk to the trail system or walk north and beyond.
And as part of the redevelopment of that section with the grant money that the town got, they're going to connect the rest of that side with all sidewalks. So it is, it is tough to be the, what you think, just kind of hanging out there and being the sidewalk to nowhere, but what's great is when they do connect.
Might be someone I grant to do here.
No, I understand.
Believe me, we wish we could.
But the only other thing I would say is that I'm really happy that we're at this point, and that really all we're talking about is sidewalks. And so I hope you, I hope this goes through well.
Mr. Oliver?
Again, I'll echo my colleagues. I think the sidewalk's important. And, you know, just one note about the two places you had mentioned already with Stewart's and the Hess station. Both locations did extensive landscaping in the front, and it didn't really fit with the elevations and the grades and stone walls and stuff, so it's also another thing to consider why they might not be there. But also, again, thank you for getting to where we're at. I know there was a lot of different ideas with the site, but I'm glad to be working towards the end.
Thank you. That's a good point you made about the landscaping. Ms. DeNapoli?
I also want to echo our congratulations that we have reached this point. I know at times we've all been wondering, and I hope you are as pleased as we are. It looks really so much more improved. I think you will notice that in your business uptake. And I know you weren't planning on being on the cutting edge, but you are with the sidewalks. So I unfortunately or fortunately concur with my other colleagues, and thank you.
So to some, I think you heard, they want you to keep the sidewalks.
We got it.
As proposed, yes.
The school district is.
This is true. There is a minor change, but that would be, the school district is not Roosevelt. It would be an SP1, the Special District of School, the Hyde Park Central Schools.
Okay.
Just a minor.
Minor. So just so we're all clear, we have a resolution already prepared.
Uh-huh.
It had a lot of conditions, and so what we were asking you to do is clear some of those conditions, so that that way it can be faster for me to sign. So.
Okay.
In our resolutions, you have six months, once they're approved, in which to meet conditions. So if there's anything that can be met in advance, that the faster you can get through those, the faster I can sign, as you know.
Okay.
So I think we got through, it sounds like between you and Liz, Lou and Ms. Axelson, you got through everything, so.
Yeah. The only thing we're waiting for is the DOT permit.
DOT permit will be a condition, but you're going to get that. And I assume you've already applied for it?
We did.
Okay. If you'd like, I can speak to Chuck Walter, who does permitting here, or Pete can either one. I'm happy to, to see if I can speed that along. And we should be good to go next, in two weeks.
So the meeting is in the 21st?
21st.
Okay. Were we first on the agenda?
You were first on the agenda.
Because I'm not going to be here. My associate's going to be here.
No, 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 no. I think you need to be first on the agenda. I'm anticipating a very long public hearing for the second one.
Wait a second. The public hearing is before the?
No, 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 no. You will.
You'll be the first public hearing. We have two public hearings. You're the first one.
You should be in and out.
Good.
I anticipate opening, allowing any member of the public to speak, hearing any additional comments from consultants and Planning Board members, and then closing.
Okay.
This assumes that you have the lighting changes for the rear, yeah. And that's it.
Soon as I get that, we'll resubmit everything. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll see you in two weeks. Next item on the agenda is Bourbon Street Liquors, the applicant seeking a site plan amendment. We have received a recommendation from Ms. Moss to waive the public hearing portion of this. Welcome back, Ms. Conforti.
Hi, how are you?
And in the meantime, everyone had a chance at our last workshop meeting to see what the, to see what the siding looks like in real life as opposed to the Photoshop that looked like chewed up plywood. So we, did you choose a color for your roof? Did you make a decision?
I think we're going to go with the dark brown.
Dark brown? Okay.
What are you looking at me for?
Well, because it's your sample.
You own it, Pete.
You weren't supposed to say that.
So we have, are there any questions or comments from the board?
Nope.
No.
So we have a resolution prepared by me. The only condition is, is that on the survey, there's no place for me to sign.
Oh.
So you have to sign. There's a, it's called the owner's signature block, and I have to sign. It's called the chair's signature block. We have copies of both that we can email to you.
Okay.
Or you can get a sample tonight before you go.
Can I get it from you?
Uh-huh.
Perfect.
And it just needs to be put on the survey.
Page it on there.
Yeah, so you'll have to sign and data, and then I have to sign and data, and it'll have the resolution number that we'll be reading off tonight, et cetera. So otherwise, we're all free and clear.
I'm excited. We're just waiting for the building permit.
Who has this file?
I do.
Thank you.
Resolution to grant site plan approval for Bourbon Street Liquor, date September 7th, 2016, resolution 16-35. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Board grant site plan amendment approval to the project as shown on the survey and applying illustration and authorizes the chairperson or his designated to sign the site plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, addition of an owner's signature block to the survey. Two, addition of a Planning Board chairman's signature block to the survey. And three, payment of all fees.
Second.
Sounds good.
I just want to point out that I labored over all those whereas's that were just. Rush through there? And for the record, I want to.
Should I read them then?
No, 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 no. And for the record, well, we normally, our attorney normally does this, but escrow wasn't collected for the attorney or the consultants. And also, just for the record, we did receive a comment, it's in the whereas's, but we did receive a reply from Dutchess County Planning. They did expedite review and had no comments whatsoever.
Oh, that's good.
So any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
You just need to get the signature blocks on a survey so I can sign.
Okay.
That meets the conditions because there are no more fees to be paid, I know.
Okay.
So, and then as soon as I sign, you can get your building permit.
Perfect.
All right?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. It was a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
There you go, Linda.
The next item on the agenda is a waiver for solar panels to be placed on a home located 23 Fuller Lane. The change is minimal. It isn't a statewide area scenic significance, which means that it does require review. However, in this location, 23 Fuller Lane, it is not visible from the river or from either one of the historic sites, i.e. Vanderbilt or Roosevelt, which gives rise to the SAS. So anybody have any questions or comments?
Nope.
It's nice to see one more family going solar. We have a lot of these these days in Hyde Park. I feel very progressive. So who has this folder?
Let me.
Thank you.
Resolution number 16-36. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town Hyde Park Planning Board by Scott Miller on August 15th, 2016, for property located at 23 Fuller Lane, Hyde Park. And whereas, the application is to obtain approval for construction of roof-mounted solar panels on existing one-family home in the historic overlay district. And whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the Town Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled "Miller Roof-Mounted Solar Panels." Regarding the specific request submitted in the building permit application dated June 15th, 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is discussion, another discussion about the Hutchins-Stadtonburg decals. So what gave rise to this discussion is that first, as I said at the last meeting, Tad, our zoning administrator, has opined that because these indicate what the business is, storage, they are signs. They're conveyed as a graphic symbol. Now, we sent them to the ZBA for a variance because they weigh exceed the maximum of 100 square feet allowable signage. However, the chairwoman of the ZBA pointed out to me that our board is supposed to grant, if we want to, the dimensional increase because, yes, for every 20 feet they're set back from the roadway.
Right.
So that way, the ZBA could then grant the minimum variance required. So this just occurred yesterday, and so if we do a resolution for the next meeting, which I can write up as well, granting them, we could grant up to whatever it is that would make their, I have to total all this and then see what that totals up to, then get the freestanding sign, take that out, and then there's an unapproved sign for one of their tenants, and take that out. And then whatever is left from that amount, I could give, we could give them, if we're ready for this, two inches, which seems a little silly, but for each one of these, as an increase. So that way, it'd still be a smaller increase. Now, just eyeballing this, there's so many of these, it's going to weigh exceed the 100. So the other thing I wanted to ask people tonight as part of the discussion is, we can only probably grant for a few. So if we are, is there an area, like this is where the storage units are, this is where an office is, and this is the tenant sign that's there. So would you want to grant, like, because I have to specify which ones we're granting for, so do you want to grant, like, for the ones on the right?
Yes.
Sound reasonable?
I'm with you, I'm with her.
Don't make me laugh.
I would agree with that. I also, though, I'm not sure if I'm, if I'm misremembering, but I thought the tenant sign was not a permitted sign. I thought that they.
The tenant sign is permitted, but it's not approved.
It's not.
It doesn't have a building permit.
Okay.
They're in the process of either applying for one, or they're going to take it down.
And there, and there was some discussion about how many we wanted to approve, considering that they're looking for further tenants and they're going to need more signage.
Right.
That's impossible.
In other words, if the ZBA were to grant all of these, then they, for any other tenants, they'd have to go back for variances for tenant signage, which I don't think they want to. So that's why I'm taking the size here. And I've also, I'm going to email Mr. Turner tomorrow to say, if you think there are other tenant locations, I mean, other tenant signs, can you give me a rough, can you give me a size for them and location? Because I have to take all of that out of the 100 square feet for what's left. This is why we always say we hate signs. We don't hate the actual signs. It's just, our code is tough to deal with on, because this is a lot of calculating to do.
Yeah.
So, but, and yes, I'd also be looking, because Chairwoman Donahue indicated they would look to ask for recommendation for whether we think these signs are there. for recommendation for whether we think these signs are there. And I kind of got that Chris and Ann were fine with them, that maybe Tori and Diane were not so fine with the number of them, and I didn't really get a firm grasp from Chan other than, I think you think they're okay.
Yeah.
And Bob, you think they're okay?
I have no problem with it. I still think the simplest answer is just to put a door up there.
Yeah, me too.
I mean, you eliminate this whole signage question. It's a fake door, bolted to the wall, and you're done. It just-
Although that might be considered a sign too.
No.
No.
It would be actual-
That's a door.
Door. It'd be an architectural element.
Probably much more expensive.
It is more expensive. These are vinyl. These are vinyl. They're not expensive at all. So at any rate, I'll-
I did have one question. If they have, what's the definition of a shopping center? How many tenants?
Three or more.
Three or more, okay.
With sep, with separate entrances.
So we have two now, right?
Mm-hmm.
If they, do they get anything extra sign-wise if it's-
If they get a third tenant now?
Not if it's, I'm sorry, not if it's in a single building.
Okay.
If the shopping, like, for example, I know this is going to sound very strange when I say this, but under our code, where Petatella Realty is, is a shopping center.
All right.
They've got three buildings, three businesses, each has a separate entry. So their signs, they get more signs because they're a shopping center, even with different businesses in each one. But they still totaled to the 100, 100 square feet overall.
Okay, okay. And we're limiting the number?
Of tenants?
For a recommendation.
No, of signs?
Yes, for recommendation. Since these are considered signs, in a recommendation, we want to know how many you think would be appropriate, if any. It sounds like you don't think any may not be, but I think I'm hearing four, and if I count me as five, I'm beginning to relax on this as well. And this color is a lot better than-
Well, yeah, I was going to say they're going for the darker green, not the highlighter green.
Yeah, that makes it, this makes it more, and plus, I think they did a really nice job-
Oh, it's gorgeous.
-of painting.
Yeah.
I like it better than that old tobacco yellow color.
Except for that one back corner. Until I go by, I want to stop and get a can of paint. And you just forgot that one corner.
Just go tell him it's what you're going to do, and I'm sure he won't mind. So at any rate, I will have a resolution prepared recommending, I'll see how many we can get to give them the two inches. It's, it looks as though it's, from what I eyeballed, it looks like it's at least 40 feet back from the fog line, these.
Okay.
So, and I think we should concentrate on these as opposed to those.
Right, yeah.
The ZBA can just give those if they want to or not, because like I said, this is where the storage is, and this is where the offices are for the tenants. So-
I mean, as, as a potential customer, I think I would find it confusing if there were decals on the side, and I thought I was going to a different kind of business.
Mm-hmm.
So it makes sense to put them on the storage side.
That's a good point as well. Then last, we have a discussion on the revised rural events law. I wasn't going to prepare a comment letter because the revisions they made were from us. They followed our recommendations and changed it. So they clarified that this is a one-time deal. So when you come in for this, you're going to show, let's say this is your site plan. If this is the area where one tent, five tents could go, they'll show a rough footprint. They'll show, it is going to be parking here. If there's only parking for 100 spaces, and they would, and their parking, their event plan, they would show that they would have an off-site facility and busing. So we clarified that once you get this, that's it. You can do it for, you know, as long as you want to. We also clarified more that it's, this is not, if you, like, when Chan, you had a wedding at your property.
Right.
I had a wedding on my property.
Right.
We didn't charge for those as we're family or friends, so-
We tried, Linda.
No, I think you paid for that one. That was your son's, so. But these will only be if you're operating this, in other words, for a profit. And when I say for a profit, that doesn't mean that you necessarily net a lot of money, that you're, you're collecting money for it. So in other words, it would be-
You're intent-
Curve, mark, and, and-
So the clarification-
Hold your room, man.
County planning had also commented that they did, they couldn't understand whether it was a one-time or-
Pull the plug.
Or whether you had to come back for each event. So it's clarified that it's for multiple events. Also, they, we worked a little bit more on language such that it gives us more discretion. If you have, let's say, 400 acres, and the places you've shown us are basically, there's a mile around each way, if you wanted to keep the place open until 2:00 AM instead of 1:00 AM, you could. So it's that kind of thing. So it actually, I think, improved it. So we don't have to respond, but if you want me to, I can just say, I can send a quick note saying, thank you for making the changes.
I like that.
That's what I'll do. Make it a motion to authorize me to do that?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Make it a motion to-
I just have one brief comment to make. This is, this Sunday will be the 15th anniversary of 9/11.
Thank you.
There will be a candlelight service starting at 6:30. Actually, the service is at 7:00. Candles are given out at 6:30 over at Hacket Hill at Paul Tagmeier Memorial. All those in our community are invited.
Always. Everyone in the community is invited, and I've been on the fringes twice, and it's a really moving event, I have to say. And it's great that you remember that, Bob. Thank you. Any other business? I just want to greet our new, excuse me, not quite new secretary, which I believe she'll be being appointed at this Monday's Town Board meeting. So there's Cynthia back there. Already coming to see what it's like.
Welcome.
Make it a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and thank you, media committee, particularly for all your directional help tonight, Mr. Sweet.
And you can't leave till you sign that.
In the midst of technical-
And I promise not to-